Hello. Stand for the prayer, please. Today as the session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for the city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilor Samaras.
Here.
Councilor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Conway.
Here.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Here.
Councilor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Councilor Mercier.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Rourke.
Here.
I am present.
Are there any memorials tonight? I just have two from the chair if you don't mind. Like the moment of silence for Harry L. Stamos. Harry L. Stamos, Tinsborough, passed away on Thursday, October 21st, just a few short days of his 84th birthday. Harry leaves behind the love of his life Christine Stamos, for whom he was happily married for 61 years. Harry was also the brother of Peter Stamos, which we all know from Lowell High School. And one more moment of silence for Nate Fabian. Nathaniel A. Fabian, 20 years old. Brought the brightest of lights into this world on the 26th of March, 2001. Nathaniel was born to Stacy Brayley and Henry Fabian, joining his older brother, Henry J. Nate was educated in the Lowell Schools and graduated from Lowell Middle Sex Academy Charter School, 2019. During high school, he worked at the Rogers Street McDonald's. He went on to Middle Sex Immunity College Dental Assistant Program, from which he graduated in 2021. Nate is survived by his parents, Stacy and Scott Brayley of Lowell, his brother Henry J., his sister Cornelia Brayley and her fiancee Chris Graff, his grandparents Joseph and Lisa Smith of Belmont, and many aunts and uncles and cousins. We can just dock in the chamber. Under Mayor's business, communication, remote and Zoom participation, need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Conway, seconded by Councilor Chow. City Clerk portion, need a motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the City Council meeting, October 19th, for acceptance by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Rourke. Communication, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection from my colleagues, could we, I request a suspension of rules to take item 8.4 out of order. There are registered speakers and there are representatives from the high school and school department here to provide some information.
Do you have a motion by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Conway? Motion to take 8.4 out of order. Motion 8.4 by Councilor Elliott requests City Manager, requests Superintendent of Schools to provide a report on the measures to ensure safety in all the schools, seconded by Councilor Conway. Will let the registered speakers go first?
Speakers go first, sir. Absolutely.
Betsy St. Ange?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Leahy and City officials. My name is Betsy Toro St. Ange, and I live in 110 Boylston Lane in Lowell. I'm an activist in a community, I'm sorry, and I'm an activist and advocate in the community of Lowell. I also conduct a page on Facebook called Comunidad de Lowell, which translates to Community of Lowell. As everyone knows, this past Monday, there was a lockdown in Lowell High School. According to the Lowell Sun, there was an incident off grounds of the school in which, according to the school, in which, according to the Lowell Sun, there were rumors, school officials said, of an alleged knife and that resulted in the alleged arrest of a student. This woke up the safety concerns of parents and students all over social media. And also, it woke up the concern of activists, city activists in our city, and many people who were also concerned. But I am here tonight to speak on a second incident that took place that Monday morning, involving a fight with two female students at the Lowell High School bathroom. During this fight, the victim resisted, she didn't fought back, and there were four other girls involved in this fight, who were recording everything that happened and didn't assist the victim with any help. It was clearly on the video, it was seen clearly on the viral video, that nobody assisted the victim. I was invited by another activist in the city. Her name is Maria Claudio. She's from Roberto Clemente, the league here in Lowell. I was invited by her to a meeting at the Lowell High School, as she also had concerns of what was happening and also saw the video that went viral on social media. When she invited me, another activist asked me to please assist the mother of the victim, because she had a language barrier and is a non-English speaker. I invited the mother as well to the meeting, and she said that she wanted the school staff to know that she was very upset, because the school didn't handle the situation, in the case of her daughter, properly, or in a properly manner. During the meeting, this past Thursday, the mom of the victim said she never received a phone call from a school member. Her daughter called and said, "Mom, come and pick me up. I had a fight." The mother said Officer Jose Santiago took the report down but never gave her a copy. But she requested a report at the Lowell Police Department, in which I assisted her because of her language barrier, the same day of the meeting, and that was before the meeting. And during the meeting, she also left a copy to Dr. Boyd, the Superintendent of Schools, who attended the meeting. I requested a 504 plan for the lady's daughter and a family therapy, because her daughter is now suffering of panic attacks, nightmares, anxiety, due to this fight. I also suggested a family therapy for the attacker of the victim, as we have to understand that the COVID-19 pandemic has affected the mental well-being of many families. That's why I decided to request a family therapy. I also suggested that more interpreters should be in the school to assist people like this lady, who have a language barrier. I asked City officials and activists and everybody in the city to also assist me in a peaceful protest that we had on Friday, talking about the concerns of the students and parents. The lady, the mother of the victim in this case, is asking for more safety measures and policies to be enforced for safety in the schools. This lady's daughter was also bullied several times in several occasions, and nothing was being done. And I did mention in the meeting that policies need to be enforced, and according to the Mass General Laws on Chapter 71, Section 370, it is said that there is a zero tolerance policy when it comes to bullying in the public schools of Massachusetts. Massachusetts, I'm sorry. Another incident happened in the Greater Lowell Technical High School, where a student brought a pellet gun this past Thursday. This is getting out of control, and this is concerning to me and everyone in this community. I am sure everyone has children, everyone has grandchildren, maybe there's a parent here to be, and I am sure that is the concern of everyone, not only the Hispanic community, but everyone in this community. I am, I am asking also, the mother of this victim is asking City officials, student officials, I mean, sorry, school officials, to please consider a safety plan in our schools, hiring more resource officers, and please to take measures as soon as possible. We don't want a tragedy, a tragedy to happen in one of our schools. And I want to say special thanks to Rodney Elliott for putting this motion in, and everyone in support of this motion. The mother of the victim did, gave me papers that I submitted right now to Rodney Elliott, and that is the police report in this case. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ezekiel Ramos. No more registered speakers.
Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the speakers. I, I also know that there are representatives from the high school that are here. I did speak to the superintendent about this. I also recognize and appreciate he, that a listening session was held previous to this, and he told me it was attended by 50 or 50, 60 parents, and that's, that's important. I actually attended the rally. I had filed this motion before, but I attended the rally on Friday, where there were 25 or 30 people that attended, and regrettably, at the, at the conclusion of it, there was actually, there was actually a fight between two young ladies right on the Butler Monument. So I, I think it's important that we get more information for the parents that may not have gone to the listening session but might be watching here tonight, and that's why I filed the motion, to get more information out, and also to invite people, you know, leaders at the high school, and they can present some information on what is being done to reassure parents, as well as have a discussion with this body on exactly how can we increase safety at the high school. If there's, if there's no objection, another headmaster and the dean of discipline has also joined us.
Okay. Is anybody prepared to speak tonight, or if you'd like to, sure, Mr. Piata?
Good afternoon, everyone, good evening, everyone. I am prepared to speak. What I was asked by Dr. Boyd was to share the, kind of like a snapshot of what we talked about at the community forum. I know this is a wider audience, and there are other folks here through TV and here at the City Council to be able to share what we shared at the, at the community forum on Thursday, October 21st. That night, we had a planned open house from 6:00 to 8:00 to showcase all the positive things happening at the high school, and it was well-attended by our community, including prospective students from middle school, and we did some, we provided some opportunities for the students and families to see a little bit more about the school. But when we realized that there was a need to provide additional information to families, we pivoted and added a session to hear the concerns and also to provide some information to clarify incident that took place on that Monday, October 18th. And we just, I just want to be able to, and I could provide you with the slide deck on my way out. I have it in paper format for all the councilors here, so they can have a copy of what was shared with the families exactly. But I'll give you a highlight of each of the slides. It's, it's obviously our priority for a safe and supportive school for all students, and we continue to strive to do that. And we do this by working on building community connectedness with all of our students and community members within the school, developing positive relationships. One of the things that we did this year was switch our advisory period, which is a check-in from the middle of the day to the first period, knowing that coming back from a global pandemic and 18 months of students being remote, they needed that opportunity to check in with their teachers first thing in the morning. So they have that opportunity to have at least one trusted adult in the building that they can go to with concerns. And we've noticed that that has really opened up lines of communication for us, and we're able to find out things that may happen, because students are confiding in our staff. And we continue to promote a see something, say something. We have over 3,000 students, and with 3,000 students, we can, we obviously have a large high school, but we also have opportunities to work with our students to provide us with information, if there is something that is about to happen. And that's taking time, but we're working, I think we're really making, turning a corner, because we are getting information from our students and preventing things from happening before they do. When something does occur, though, the primary role of the leadership team is to respond to the incident in hand and ensure student and staff safety. Now, we know with social media, we're in the beginning stages of gathering the facts and investigating, but information does get put out by anyone with the social media account. Sometimes it's accurate and sometimes it's not, but these posts can certainly generate fear and unease. As a school, we're trying to balance the need for speed and immediacy, get the word out, but at the same time, we want to make sure that it's verified. So if we do get a report that something is happening from a safety perspective, we can't always just send out information without verifying what is happening, and we need to conduct that investigation to get reliable information out there. We never want to put out false information when we can avoid that. We also have to comply with FERPA, which restricts us from sharing out information about specific students and their disciplinary outcomes. And if a matter involves the police in an active investigation, there also might be further constraints on information sharing. And I do want to address the incident that took place with the, that forced us to go into a shelter in place on Monday, October 18th. And we had a recent incident where misinformation was being shared out while we were beginning to investigate. On Monday, October 18th, at 10:40, the LHS administration received information that there was an alleged threat to the LHS campus, and a report that an alleged assault with a knife had taken place off school grounds involving two Lowell High School students. Immediately, the police were contacted, and the building was immediately put into a shelter in place as a precautionary measure as the investigation began. Excuse me. The lockdown lasted about 40 minutes while police thoroughly investigated the threat and identified and arrested the alleged suspect of the off-school grounds assault. When the police determined that there was no longer a threat to the school community, the shelter in place was lifted and students resumed a regular schedule. Prior to the close of the day, the school administration released a letter informing staff, students, and families of the incident that took place and the outcome of the investigation. On October 19th, the day after the incident, we had planned to have an evacuation drill, and that was planned well in advance. We take 3,000 students and have them march over to the Songus Arena as a precautionary measure in the event that we did need to evacuate. All of our students have assigned seats based on their advisory, and it's listed, I don't have my ID on me, but it's listed on the back of their ID if they're, they're not sure. So if we did need to evacuate, all students would know where they're supposed to go, where they're supposed to sit. We're really fortunate to have a place like the Songus Arena that can house us in the event that we need to evacuate the building. So we were planning on having that drill, but because of the heightened anxiety, we decided to pull back from having the drill. But what we did do instead was we used the time to reduce anxiety and provide students with additional briefing on our safety procedures. Through our advisory program, we had all students attend a Zoom meeting and also provide them with a PowerPoint presentation and a video recording of our Sergeant Kelly, our school resource officer, explaining the various safety procedures in the event that we were to go into some sort of a lockdown or options-based drill. And students and staff were also provided with an opportunity to complete a survey regarding their perceptions about school safety and their understanding of procedures and protocols, which we did review the data, and we reported that back out to the school community. On October 21st, we added a community forum prior to our scheduled parent open house to share with parents our commitment to a safe, supportive environment, to discuss the communication systems in place between school and home, and discuss the incident that occurred on the 18th. Yesterday, during advisory, we had a whole school community meeting, all of our students were involved in a meeting led by me and our school president, senior class president, to respond to questions that had been submitted to staff and students. This also gave us a chance to review our core values and to ensure that students understand what their responsibilities are and the expectations that we have of them, and also what expectations they should have of us. We plan on continuing these forums and making them more interactive during the school year, and continue, we will also continue to have listening sessions and involve the community in any ways that we can. And as Ms. St. Ange said, we, I was, I was at the meeting on Thursday with some members of the community, and I committed to continue to meet with them on a regular basis to keep those lines of communication open. So that's essentially the, the report that we gave at the community forum, and we'll continue to work with our school committee, with our superintendent, and with the City Council if, if possible, to increase safety measures at the high school.
Before you take a couple of questions, was there any talk of security, more security guards, more police resource officers?
Well, we currently have four resource officers at the school, and I would say that that, I think that staffing model is pretty robust for a high school of that size. We are talking with the superintendent around increasing the amount of security officers on the campus at this time.
Okay. Thank you. If you don't mind, does anybody have questions? Councilor Elliott?
No, thank you, Mr. Philato, for coming and sharing that information. I think the more information that we do share, both with the school committee, and I know a lot of this falls within their purview, but as you mentioned, you know, the school resource officers, we provide those officers. As far as security, is that something that the city also has responsibility for, or is that, that rests with the, that's the school?
That's completely the school department's responsibility, in terms of that. And as was indicated, we are fully staffed with resource officers at the high school.
Right.
The shortage has affected some of the other, you know, elementary and middle school, but the superintendent of police working with the superintendent of schools has committed to fully staff, as we have in the past, resource officers at the high school.
No, I think that's good to know, because there's just, you know, you hear certain pieces of information, and it's, it's good to know that. So, you know, as I mentioned, I did, you know, one of the other concerns I heard was, you know, discipline. What is, what is the discipline? Is disciplinary action being taken? And that's why I know Dr. Howe is here, and I wonder if she could, if she, if it's okay, if she shares some information on, you know, what's taking place when it comes to discipline? Is it taking place?
Specifically regarding the incidents that took place, or other?
Just in general, when there are, when there are incidences like this or others, what is taking place? Because some folks spoke at, at this rally on Friday afternoon, that that was not taking place. I'd just like some clarification and to let the parents know, and, and teachers and students, what, you know, what is the course of action and, and what is taking place? And then my only other follow-up would be, you know, I, I know that we spoke that during, you know, kids haven't been in school for a year and a half, and is there adjustment? How can we provide support for students that haven't been in this atmosphere? And is this part of why we see sort of, you know, a lot of, lot of episodes, I'll say?
Well, I can tell you that our deans and our administrative team is working very hard, along with our teachers, to create a safe environment. Now, if a disciplinary issue arises, especially a violent disciplinary issue or an issue with involving drugs or weapons, that generally leads to a suspension. And if you look at our data compared, this year compared to our last two years before we went into COVID, our suspension numbers are lower, but there are certainly a number of incidents that involve, that are involving suspensions, out-of-school suspensions with students who have been involved in altercations. Vaping is another concern that we have, and I know that's happening across other school districts, but it's something that is not, we're not tolerating, we're not, we don't approve of it, and we don't want to turn the other way. So students who are involved in those types of things are receiving consequences. We also do want to make sure that we have a restorative practice. So we use a mediation program at the school, so that when students do come back from suspension, they can try to solve the problem. Oftentimes, a suspension just separates them for a period of time, and they end up back in the same class or in the hallways together. So not only do we want to make sure that students receive a consequence, but they also receive some restorative, a restorative approach. It's a, it's a, it's a combination. It's not one or the other. We do have to have discipline. We do have to have consequences, but when students are ready to come back and return to school, they're offered that opportunity to have that mediation. We're also working closely with other organizations around vaping or drug and substance abuse. We also have a program for students who are transitioning back after long suspensions, talking about your, the concern around being outside of school for 18 months. There are also students who are hospitalized or have other reasons why they would be absent for a long time, and we've for a long time and we've instituted a new program at the school with an additional social worker to help students transition back to campus in a positive way so that they receive ongoing social, emotional support and academic support at the same time. But our deans are very busy, not only with discipline, but also working, bringing in parents. I've, I meet with parents, I ask the deans to try to let me get in on some of those parent meetings, especially if they're Spanish-speaking parents, and to address the need of more translators. I agree, we do need more diverse staff and we're working on that as well to ensure that our staff have the ability to communicate well, both linguistically and have the cultural background to connect with our school community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you. I think this is very helpful. These are the answers to people that have reached out to me and have concerns. I think it helps reassure people in this city, parents, students, teachers, as well just community members, that the administration is, has a plan, they are implementing a plan, there are measures, there's their support, there are programs, there's opportunities to, to adjust the, you know, the issues at the high school. So, thank you, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
I don't know if anyone else, and your staff has anything else to add, but thank you. Usually the process is a motion is approved, but you came down and provided timely information, so.
We're happy to share information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Samaras had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Filato, for coming before us to speak on this issue. I think you can safely say that there are no books that you can go to, to read on how to handle children coming back from a COVID situation. Am I correct? It's just not up to you. You're dealing with a new world. You're also dealing with the media, the electronic media, that it's a whole different way of dealing with situations. So we appreciate your coming forward. I think one of the other things that you have to realize that one of the biggest problems that we have sometimes in running a school is dealing with perception. If there's a perception out there that there are problems, it's, and there are no problems, it's hard to explain. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's hard to deal with. But the issue of perceptions have to be dealt with. I think we would need some help in that, in the sense of when, there have been so many stories that have come out that this happened and this happened, you know, and a lot of it not true, but there are issues where things are true. I think what we need from you in the future, I think we need right now, while we're going through this, what I call, transition period of welcoming our students back from COVID, our parents, our teachers, it's a whole new world and, and there are issues that you have to deal with every day. But I think the quicker you can get us information, and I think what, you know, your responsibility is to the school committee and to the superintendent's office, but I think also when, you're also including the city council, we can help in other ways and our other ways are financing sometimes some of the problems that you deal with. But I, I think the one thing that experience has told me is that the quicker you get the information out and the more truthful, when I say more truthful, like you said, you have to make sure that what you're saying is correct and accurate. And I commend you for that because that is what can cause the most harm when people feel that they're not getting accurate information. So the thing is, from what I hear, you've got the right approach, but I think at this particular point, perhaps the city manager and the superintendent can sit down and talk about, you know, just have a general discussion as to, okay, what's, what are the problems? What are some of the issues that you deal with daily that you really don't have enough resources to deal with? Or what are the issues that you can deal with if left alone? And what other type of help would make this a better, better school system? What's happening here is happening literally everywhere across the country, there's no question about that. But I think the more dialogue we can establish, the more interaction we can have between the city and the school department, the more, the accuracy of those reports. And, you know, there's another thing that people have to understand, sometimes when you're talking about discipline, people are looking at discipline from their eyes as to, one thing I always found in education, parents or people are, everybody's an expert in education because everybody went to school. Everybody went through a process. Do you follow what I'm saying, what I'm leading to? And sometimes you have to be able to give an answer to someone who believes that suspension is the only way to go. Some people who believe absolutely no suspensions. You know, there's so many issues, but I think in a sense, you have the right idea, everything I've heard is that you have a sincere approach to meeting the needs of our students, but I think is sharing that information. Right now, we're in a, we're in a transition period and we need to have more understanding. And the way, along, just a long-winded way of saying, we understand what you're doing in many cases, but sometimes we don't. So the more information we get, the better off we are able to respond to your needs. And everybody wins. And that's what I would like to see more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Counsel Elliot for putting this motion on. I think it's extremely important. And I think what's, has been touched on here is the fact that the school department certainly is part of the city and I think it's important that we all work together in order to be as effective as possible because, again, it is, it is a team effort. You know, the high school and, as Counsel Samaras certainly would attest to, it's a complicated situation because you have over 3,000 students and it's the third-largest high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, you know, the, one of the issues that we have, of course, has been brought up and the fact that we, we don't have enough of police officers available. And I think that's, you know, that's, that's understandable. Hopefully, we can, that will be rectified in the, in the, in the future. We have four officers, as just been mentioned, at the high school and seven security personnel and, and they, and the, the whole idea of increasing that security, I think, is, is an absolutely excellent idea. Also, I certainly hope that in, in, in time, we can get those SROs back to the middle school because I think that's extremely important. You know, the SROs, let me just say something very quickly about that. I worked with them for, you know, for many years and I found that they're not the police of what we might think years ago. The, the police that we have today, they're, they're trained specifically and, well, they're trained in so many different areas, but the police officers that work in the schools, I mean, they're not just a police officer, they're a counselor, a mentor. They're at times even a parent and, and certainly a role model and much more. So today, I was fortunate enough, I went down to the, the superintendent and I had a brief conversation. He brought me over and we took a tour of, of some of the high school. And, you know, again, knowing the staff there, it's a good staff, it's a solid staff and I think that, you know, everyone is, is there trying to do the best job they possibly can. Just a couple of quick points I want to, I want to make. As far as the social media is concerned, this is something that, you know, we have to deal on so many different levels. And the problem is, people post some of the stuff on their social media and it's either half-truths in, in many cases and in some, some cases, it's downright lies. So I think we have to be very careful with that. Also, you know, when, when we have specific, a specific serious incident that takes place, there are certain facts, should we say, that can't come out because of an age, the, somebody being underage. So again, with a system that is almost 16,000 students, I certainly hope that we can get these police officers back into, back into the middle school, which I think would be extremely helpful because right there, it is that, that transition, the middle school having communication with the high school and vice versa, it can certainly help out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank the, thank the staff from Lowell High School for being here tonight. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Filato.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Elliot. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Back to the agenda. Communications from the city manager, motion response, any questions on homeless initiatives? This one, quite a few motions, so Counsel Mercy in noon, Samaras and Counsel Elliot. Counsel Mercy, you want to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that this was a very thorough report. I believe it came from Christine McCall and it was tremendously put together. But first, I want to say, please don't let my comments think, remind you that I'm not, that I'm thinking that there's nothing being done. I certainly believe that there's a lot being done in the city to help homeless people. I know we have many organizations, CTI and we have the sanctuary place on Appleton Street, Life Connections, they have a sanctuary whereby they have beds for thirty, for 14 men and five, six women and they do a tremendous job. I understand that. And it's just probably I'm feeling that I wish we had more, more of it. When you see the influx of people, what's scaring me is the Methadone Mile and the mayor in Boston is closing that down on Mass Avenue and putting them into a hotel in Revere, of which the mayor of Revere isn't happy about that. I'm thinking, how many of those people are going to come here, hearing the word about, around this issue? I think that we're overburdened with the number of homeless that probably don't even come from this city and that's what bothers me. I know that we need low-income housing for people that are the working poor, absolutely. But then you have to think about housing for people that are alcoholics. I don't know how you could do that. People that are on drugs, provide them housing? People that are mentally ill, provide them housing? I don't think these are the group of people that can handle an apartment for themselves so that when they think about low-income housing equals less homelessness, to some degree, I believe that, but I'm concerned more or less about a facility. A facility where people can go and be admitted like a surrogate housing whereby they, they have their place in there safely, warmly in the winter and they're monitored by that. The mentally ill need to be monitored to take their medication. They need programs to detoxify them. This is the things that I'm talking about. I'm not saying for one minute that our community teamwork and Lowell Transitional Living Shelter is not helping. They are, they are. But today, I find that the Lowell Transitional Living Center, I spoke to a person that is on the waiting list, he's number five on the waiting list trying to get in there. So that concerns me that it's so popular that people want to get out, in there and there's a waiting list. I'm trying to find a way to create more housing for them. So I'm, and, and I'm, I'm looking at this report and, and I'm, and I want to know through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, that they have meetings, the council, this coordinating council, they meet and organizations like Lowell General Hospital, Lowell Plan, Lowell House, Lowell Housing Authority, UTEC. I understand that they meet. Are these meetings for representative organizations only? Like what if someone on the council wanted to go? Could we venture to that?
Sure. And we actually sent out the invitation for the last one to the whole council, but absolutely, counsel, that's not a problem at all.
And where do they meet? Do you know?
It's usually here or Zoom. It's been Zoom because of conditions, though the last one was half and half. Half people were here, half were Zooming in.
For example, just when we think we're ahead a little bit, we get behind again. I think part of the whole puzzle of this is detox centers and there's not enough beds in the detox centers. But here's the thing, a lot of people that are alcoholics or that need this detoxification centers to try to get them off of this, or they have residential treatment or whatever they have to go and check into, there's this group called the Wheels of Hope. It's a service that offers people free transportation from the Merrimack Valley to their secured spots at a detox or residential treatment facility. It is funded through the Mass state budget and it's all dried up. There's no more money available to do that. It's like saying, we're going to try to help you, to get you there, but when you're like six weeks into the program, your, your transportation is gone. We, we really can't have that. We have to keep it momentous. We have to have momentum and keep it going. So there's things like that that we have to monitor. I don't know if people know that, but I just thought that that was an important issue to bring up. But I'm, I'm so into wanting to get a facility to, to get people that can't maintain an apartment for themselves. They need a facility. There were many, many years ago, Solomon Mental Health, we had that. All the programs that we needed years ago, I wish like trends like bell-bottom pants that were no longer there and they come back again. I wish the facility that we had years ago that was so prevalent and people took part in it and was much needed, I wish it would come back again. So that's what I'm talking about. And I'm not saying it's, we can do it because I don't think the city can do it. I think we need help all around. I've said it before, so I'll say it again. I don't know if anybody's listening. I know if I hit the lottery, I would try to do something about that financially, but here's what we really need is a facility for that. And thank you, Christine, for this detailed report. It was very interesting. Again, I know people are doing their job, they're trying, but it's getting out of hand. It's like we can't, it's like there's no light at the end of the tunnel. It just keeps going and going and winter's coming and I want to get people off the street. And I know that there's some out there that do not want to get in off the street. I know that. That's their way of life and that's what they're used to, but we see them every day coming in with the co-op team and the co-op team does everything they can to help these people, but it's just that their hands are tied. So thank you for the report. We'll keep trying and maybe this group of people can come to some consensus to get more people off the street. Thank you.
Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city manager for this very complete report. Madam Manager, I think we all realize that there are cities across the country that are in serious trouble because of this situation. And the talk is that we need a multi-tiered approach to be able to handle the situation. There's just no one simple answer. I'm pleased with this report because it talks about what we're doing here in Lowell, that we are taking a multi-level approach. And could you just highlight a couple of things in the, so our constituents, you know, people come to us and, oh, well, now it's election season, we're going house to house. People are asking questions, what are you doing about the homeless? How, I mean, some are concerned about them being in storefronts and causing some issues or at the park. Others are concerned that they have no place to go or where do they have a place to go? They don't, they don't really understand what's happening. So if you could, in a sense, give us a, a few highlights so people have an understanding that there truly is action being taken to try to deal with this issue.
Sure.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. So, there's been an awful lot going on around the homeless issue in Lowell, and as has been mentioned by Council Mercy, you know, the number of organizations who have come together on the coordinating council. This is going back over two years now that we began this work, before the pandemic. Then the pandemic, of course, put things into a whole new, how shall I say, condition that was even more challenging, a condition that was challenging to begin with. And we have everybody from healthcare providers, Lowell General Hospital, the Lowell Community Health Center, all of the mental health providers, the nonprofits, the UTEC, CTI, the Greater Lowell Health Alliance, the, you know, faith community, Elliott Church, SMOC, Life Connections, who've been tremendous, the university, the CBA, Hunger and Homeless Commission. It, it has been just an all-out effort by everybody in the city trying to tackle this very complicated issue. And so, there are a number of fronts that this is being looked at. We have funded, we funded significant monies through CARES for this, and, and it's, you know, close to $3 million that we've already funded programs and so forth through CARES money, and then another, oh my goodness, Connor, you can tell me, but different funds, you know, from entitlement funds to other CDBG entitlement funds. So there's been hundreds of thousands, actually over millions of dollars that we have in the past year and a half since COVID struck, put into all of these initiatives. And, and we can provide the entire budget as to what we have been funding. So that's one thing the city has been really aggressive at, in, in providing the needs to so many of our community partners across the city. You mentioned, you know, SMOC, Life Connections is doing an outstanding job. The hotel program, which came into being last year, is now going to be extended coming November 1st, and we have a little over 200, over 200 beds that we can identify for winter protocol. The, there's a number of challenges, counselor. One of the things that was mentioned, and this is another focus, and I want to, again, acknowledge CTI, because CTI has stepped up and has played a big role in this area of homelessness, single individual homelessness. You know, previously, there's been a lot of resources for many years, put into family homelessness, and rightfully so, and that had, the state and, and federal government had provided resources that went a long way of getting families off the street, out of hotels and motels, and into housing. But the same effort wasn't put many years ago for the single adult homeless. And so, that's been a challenge, because the reality is there isn't housing for these most difficult cases. We had a report that we've given the council previously from our consultants, and as to the Housing First Initiative, and what's important about Housing First, which has proven to be very successful across the country. And, and I think some of the comments made by council here tonight is that, you know, you, you can't ask some of these individuals to just go in and sustain themselves in an apartment and keep, you know, the wheels on the track. It's not likely to happen. Under the Housing First model, it's, it's small individual units, but with support services on the premises, for things like, you know, making sure people are keeping their mental health appointments, making sure they have, you know, resources to try and help them get job training, or whatever the needs are, but understanding they are not ready to be out in the world alone. That type of housing, quite frankly, just doesn't exist, and, and it doesn't exist here. And we've been working, this is the hardest piece of this effort, and we've been working with CTI, and with SMOC, and with LHA, to try and come up with some of these particular units. And I know there's a motion on tonight, but that has been really, really tough. It's not a solution, but it's one of the pieces. It's because most of the things that exist today for the homeless population, whether it's detox, or treatment, or whatever, it's very short-lived, you know? They may, you know, go in for treatment, but then they, they may be released, whether it's voluntary or not. And they've certainly not gotten to a place where they can go and maintain themselves. So, you know, what we're talking about is long-term supportive housing. You know, other, other, you know, type of facilities, as was pointed out, they just don't exist. There aren't enough detox beds, but there aren't enough live-in facilities where people with challenges can be cared for. And so, that's one of the initiatives of the Housing First model, is to give some money, give people who are ready for that, but with not putting them out on their own, having supportive services. And so, you know, we've worked closely, as I said, with, with all of the, these partners on trying to do that. So it's been multi-level. It's been assisting those who are unsheltered to get shelter in the winter months, and that's where we have really, this year, we feel we have ample enough beds for those who want to come in. There are a number who don't want to come in, but those who want to come in, we can try and assist. And in the meantime, if they are housed, try and work with them, you know, to see if there's housing opportunities, or job opportunities, or things, once they're, you know, in a, in a, a more sound living condition day-to-day, rather than living outdoors and not knowing where their next meal is coming from. Those are just some of the highlights. The, the packet that we provided has a number of, not just research items that we've looked at, but also other, you know, where's funding coming for, from, from certain things. I know Christine McCall is here, if there's something that, Christine, you want to highlight that, you know, again, I want to credit DPD for working so hard on this initiative. You know, we have had challenges. One of the questions we get from many people are the camps, you know, encampments that have become a health or safety crisis. We've been working with the state regarding those particular locations, similar to what you see in Boston. There's been outreach to the camps, letting them know that it will be cleaned up, and they, they, you know, if they need help, the people, the COET, as well as co-op, and the outreach workers through Life Connections are working with them to try and place them in housing. This has been going on for many weeks now, several weeks, but just the word is, you can't stay here. You know, that's not going to be sustainable, but we do want to get you relocated. So those efforts are happening right now in the city of Lowell, just as you're reading about in the city of Boston. You know, another area that we've received a lot of complaints about in recent weeks is Heard Street, the courthouse on Heard Street, that has become a haven for, for homeless, and even gaining access to the court. It's a problem, the state has also take, is taking action there, and you will see, we'll be fencing off the area simply to prevent entry, not just for the courthouse itself, but just for the whole neighborhood, it's affecting everybody over there. So, you know, I, as I mentioned previously, you know, we have conducted and compiled, working with all of the providers, a by-name list of homeless. That list is 203 people on that list, and, which sounds like a very large number, but in reality, it's a number that, you know, if, if we all work together to try and get these people the resources they need, it's something that we are, you know, intent on continuing to do. And those, that group meets weekly to go over the by-name list, you know, is this person closer to finding housing? What can be done? How can we, you know, share the information and resources? So it's very labor-intensive, very, you know, time-consuming, and, and a real challenging area for, again, our partners and, and DPD, who, who works in this field every single day. So, that's a snapshot of, of what's going on. As I said, the reports that we attached are more comprehensive, but, but it, it is a serious issue, which we are taking very seriously. And I, I think for those out there, sometimes there may be assumption, oh, nobody's doing anything to try and, you know, help people. And that's not true. In, in Lowell, we are trying to access all resources to help them. But it's a, it's a very tough challenge, it is a very tough challenge.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Council Elliot, and then Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions, but what I learned from attending the coordinating council is that that task force that has been put together has five, the five major partners, excuse me, that provide the, the support and services, and getting those, those organizations together, there's now a concerted effort, there's a coordinated effort to certainly identify and find solutions to this. I, I think the Housing First Initiative is, makes a lot of sense. I wanted to just touch a little bit on the slide deck, because that's why I filed the motion, because attending the meeting and learning some of the information on what we're going into the winter season soon enough. And since data had been starting to get collected on homelessness and folks that are unsheltered, there is an increase. There's an increase of more individuals experiencing homeless, but also, there's an increase of unsheltered people versus sheltered. So, the, the planning that has gone into place with partners like the Lowell Housing Authority, who is releasing 25 vouchers, certainly Lowell Transitional has, you know, X amount of beds, dorms, the hotel, the Sanctuary, and for males and females, the LCC Hotel. I mean, based upon the numbers, is around 250 that, from data collecting, that has identified for the winter, they need beds. So, what was positive, and, and I know that we have a lot of work cut out, is that there's been an addition of almost 50 beds, and that was kind of the delta of individuals as of October 2021, that were identified as needing winter shelter. There is, there are a number of committed outside sleepers that will not come in, and that number is, according to the report, 25. Sheltered will be 173. So, you know, the good news is, we still will need more beds, but that number of 52 people that were looking for a place to go this winter is now down to, at this point, two. So I, I thought that is positive progress. I, I also feel that the service connections that are listed in the slide deck are important because what I did learn is, it's, as you mentioned, it's very complicated, and services vary, and there are so many organizations that are providing not only shelter and services and support, but the next, the next phase, you know, mental health support and medication and things like that. So it's, it's very complicated, as the report, and everyone knows, but as you mentioned, it's important for us to let the people know that, yes, the encamp, encampments are a concern, but there's so much more work being coordinated behind the scenes to combat homelessness and so many other maladies that, that go along with it. So, I know, I know a couple of partners here, I don't know if, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, or if Carl wants to speak, I know he's a leader on this, or Christine, but I think the report says a lot, and the coordinating council is, to me, on a very good path, bringing resources that are very effective to people that need it the most, so. I know, I know Mr. Howell's here, and he's a leader on this, so I don't know.
Why, we hear from Council Drinkwater first?
Sure, okay. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then Council Noon, Council Drinkwater, and then Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of really important information in this report, and one part of this, including the, the packet materials, is a report from, in a federal interagency task force convened by HUD, with a lot of different, you know, ideas that can be tried at the local level. And one thing that's mentioned here, again, this is a federal interagency task force, and, and it's pointed out that across the country, beginning in the year 2020, for the first time, the number of unsheltered homeless individuals outnumbered the number of, of sheltered homeless individuals. And it mentions that cities across the country are dealing with encampments that are increasing in size and spilling over into public places. So, I know, as we go around and talk to people in the community, sometimes it's hard to know what's going on in, in other cities around the state, around the country, but I do think it just, it, it bears repeating that what we're dealing with here in Lowell is something that's being dealt with in cities across the country, and this report bears that out. There's one idea in here, though, in terms of different housing solutions, that the federal government is encouraging localities to pursue, and, and many of them are really not that much different than I think what's done all the time to try to add more affordable housing to communities for not just homeless individuals, but low-income families and things like that. But there's one particular idea that I think is interesting, and that's the idea of acquiring hotels and motels, to turn them into permanent housing specifically for unhoused individuals. And I just wanted to ask if, if that is something, and I know this has been utilized for, you know, for winter shelter, temporary shelter, but I've seen it utilized in, in some other cities where locality has actually acquired an unused hotel or motel and turned it into permanent shelter. Is this something, maybe even on a regional basis, that's being looked at by, you know, communities in, in the area, to see if some of these unused or unused facilities can be converted and used?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, I, I think Christine McCall can answer this. Unfortunately, we don't have hotels and motels in the city, so regional basis would, would have to be in play, but Christine, I don't know if you have something to...
Yeah, I was just going to say, there's no available hotels or motels in the city that are available for purchase to do that. I do think it's an interesting model. We are currently using a hotel in Chelmsford for our shelter program, winter housing. Their zoning doesn't allow that to be housing for the type of individuals, for permanent supportive housing. So we would have to, it would have to be a regional approach, it probably, we can't dictate to Chelmsford what they can and cannot do in their zoning. And so, it wouldn't make financial sense for us to use any of our federal dollars to purchase that hotel for permanent supportive housing, unless a directive came from the state.
Yeah, and I think if there was a regional approach, if other communities wanted to work on this together, and, you know, try and have this housing in their community, but, but that is another challenge that we have, is that we, we don't have a facility like that in the city. So, it would have to be somewhere outside the city.
And it certainly sounds like there's a willingness here in this room to pursue regional solutions, which I, which I think is appropriate, and, yeah, as, as we all know, this is a, it's a regional problem, and many of these individuals are coming from surrounding communities. So, you know, I think to whatever extent it's possible to work with other communities, and, you know, if it involves, you know, making zoning changes or, or having the state come in, I, I think it's a very worthwhile road to go down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, and Christine McCall for this report. A lot of this is a summation of the October 13 meeting of the Coordinating Council on Housing and Homelessness, and some of the council was in attendance. There's also a slide deck or slideshow in this report. I guess what I heard at the meeting as well, that participant really expressed concern regarding, you know, the difficulty in building housing, particularly affordable housing. And that's why I tie it to the motions, it's 8.3, that Carl's going to speak on it from CTI. But before Carl speaks on it, I also want to say that I concur with my fellow counselor, because a lot of us heard it, just about, not a lot, all of us, and even the candidate who ran for office, either at large or district, heard it from resident, they see the uptake of it, and some thought that there may not be anything the city has done. But from what I learned from the October 13 meeting, that there, there are some temporary solution, to some extent, that all these partner, that other counselor listed earlier... other counselor listed earlier, CTI, SMARC, Life Connection, Lowell Housing Authorities, have come together with resource. But they're still struggling in terms of finding places to build more housing, affordable housing, given that the American Rescues Fund is one in a lifetime, right now with the state and a lot of this nonprofit have their hand in it. And if they cannot find a place to build this affordable housing, or this housing, more housing, then, you know, the opportunity, they'd miss that opportunity. So, that said, I think too, is that I'd like to know as well, because the motion called for a pass forward, you know, I know that Christine McCall highlights some of the work, the federal agency task force talking about some of the pass forward. If I could have Christine McCall expand on it, what are some of the pass forward that the coordinating council planned to start with?
Thank you, Counselor. Through you to the City Manager and the rest of the council. So, as the manager aptly described earlier, the work of the coordinating council meets on a quarterly basis, to think of themes. And I think at the leadership of the City Manager, for the first time ever, we have an outreach team, we're coordinating with our partners, we're sharing information. The coordinating outreach engagement team, the COAT team, they meet weekly, and that's, you know, makes up of LPD, Trinity, Life Connection, CTI, and the co-op team, and that's reviewing the by-name list to make sure there's no duplicate efforts. You know, each individual on the list is getting the services they need. I think the path forward and the goal for the coordinating council is to try to figure out a long-term solution to deal with individual homelessness, and the city is working with partners like CTI to identify areas and location for permanent supportive housing. Eventually, we may be back in front of this body for approval for our projects. The attachment that we included, the strategies to reduce homelessness with the American Rescue Plan, obviously, there's been a lot of talk about ARPA, but we actually, the DPD is going to receive an allocation of home ARP funds, and it comes with its own set of rules than we, our regular CDBG and even our COVID CDBG regulation. So, we're working through those rules now. We are going to issue an RFP, and hopefully have targeted sites that we will work with our partners to actually build permanent supportive housing to address this issue. So, that's our path forward and agenda.
Thank you, Christine. Mr. Mayor, after the council, you know, those council want to speak on it, after they spoke on this motion respond, if I may ask, to suspend the rules to take 8.3, so, you know, the Carl from CTI can speak, because he's signed up to speak on that motion, sir.
Sure. Well, I'll let Counsel Chow make comments, and then we'll do that. Counsel Chow, do you have a comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank all the multiple counselors that put this motion forward, and I thank Madam Manager for your candid answers. I can hear the frustration in your voice with all the work that you have done with your administration, with the coordinating council. I thank you, Christine McCall and Mary Shannon, for putting together this report. And this is a really good report. It really focused on housing first. It focused on affordable housing, trying to get people off street housing, the social services, the help that they need socially. And all the partnerships and stakeholders really put a lot of efforts and work into making sure that we solve these homeless problems in the most passionate way, compassionate way, and humane way. I just, you know, with all the partnership we work, one thing that I did not see in this report was that, and the reason I'm going to ask this, because I see in some cities along the West Coast that they seem to be doing a pretty good job, and I hope that people don't hear this the wrong way, but one of the partners in the city that helped solve some of the homeless problems, I know that when people become homeless, it's not just because of drug addiction or mental illness, sometimes just bad luck in a job and a family, personal life and so forth. So, everybody could, anybody could become homeless at any point in your life. So, we need to approach it the right way. But sometimes when you have, for example, in the case of downtown, the business district, you do have some homeless that are causing problems, defecating in front of small businesses, just, you know, causing a scene and things like that. And is there, is there any plan? I just want to know, I guess, ensure, is the sheriff department or the police department having any role in this, and working with the coordinating council, try to solve the homeless problems, and maybe help mobilize the homeless people to the right location, so that way they won't be all over in front of small businesses in downtown especially. So, that type of partnership, I do think we need law and order as part of the solution as well.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead. Yep, sorry.
So, the police department have, works very closely with the outreach and with the business owners. We've had meetings with business owners downtown about, and actually, it's a handful of homeless that have caused the problem, really three, and we've worked very closely with them, and with the police department, and with the PAC teams for those individuals who all have services, and psychiatrists, and every nature of service under state government. So, we do work closely on that. And, you know, the police department, I think, have done a good job of informing downtown business if they see something to call them, and they will address that. You know, there's only so far that police can do. You can't remove people for sitting on a bench. You can't, you know, tell them they can't be in a place. You know, there are civil rights that they have. They're certainly, they can't break the law, you know, and those are things that the police do address. There can't be harassment of people, either customers or businesses. And I think it's been under control, actually, for the past, you know, month or so. I know the police have really worked, and the sector captain downtown has been in touch. Virtually every business that's had an issue has his cell phone, and they call him in real time. And that's basically what came out of some of our sit-down meetings with the businesses, is, you know, if the police aren't alerted to a particular issue that someone is having, then it's hard for them to address it. So, I think that has gone a long way, you know, from what we understand from some of them. So, it's a constant work in progress. Everybody is working together on that.
Thank you for that report, and I thank you for highlighting that, and I think that the public needs to hear that, that in addition to the nonprofit partnership, that we are working with the law enforcement to make sure that it is ordered, because I know sometimes when a few people can be rowdy, it can, we try to, say, it's a whole homeless community when it's not. Thank you so much for that.
Any other questions on this motion? All right, why don't we take a couple of things out of, sure, Madam Manager?
Just quickly, not to belabor the point, but I did want to recognize Christine McCall and her team. You know, they applied and worked on grants, very important grants that we were awarded by the state yesterday. Won a MassWorks grant pertaining to the Jeanne Dark Credit Union project on Upper Merrimack Street. That's for $1.72 million. That's a huge grant and a huge assist for the city to do infrastructure improvements in and around that area of the acre. Also, for transformative development planning by the Gallagher Terminal, and also update, that was $75,000, and also $225,000 of updating the city's master plan. So, I want to congratulate Christine and her team, because they worked very hard on these applications. There was a lot of competition that we heard, you know, from the governor and the lieutenant governor. Many, many more cities applied for these grants that didn't get them and weren't successful, and that it's a credit to DPD. So, I just want to take a moment and congratulate them.
Thank you, Christine.
I joked and said, is it every day you're going to bring over $2 million to the city? We'll be happy to see it, so.
She's on a roll. Need a motion to take a couple of things out of order by Counsel Newm, seconded by Counsel Samaras. First item, why don't we just take, let's see, 4.4 out of order. Communication by City Manager to appoint Stephen Lepot to the Conservation Commission. Any questions on this? Madam Manager, anything before we?
No, I, Mr. Lepot is here, and so if we could take it out of order, and we ask approval.
Okay. So, no vote on this, or just need a motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Congratulations. Want to say a word, or you're good, or it's up to you. Yep.
Good evening. I'd just like to thank the City Council, Mr. Mayor, the City Manager, for this opportunity to serve the city of Lowell, and I look forward to working on the commission to help protect our natural resources in the city. Thank you.
See if you can get some grant money, too. Couple of million dollars in grants for us, that'd be good. So, all right. And why don't we take, Counsel Newm, you wanted to take 8.3 out of order?
Didn't we need a roll call on that?
What's that?
No.
Okay. 8.3, Counsel Newm, request City Manager of proper department work with the nonprofits and other developers who may be interested in identifying property, land or buildings that can be developed for housing, single individual, tiny houses, modular buildings, et cetera. Seconded by Counsel Rourke.
Is there a ready to speak, Mr.?
Carl Howell.
Good evening. I just wanted to, I'm representing Community Teamwork, I'm the chief program officer there. Madam City Manager and City Council, thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this motion, 8.3. Community Teamwork feels it is vital to have all stakeholders at the table to identify and develop housing solutions for the city. We have been working closely with the city, as the City Manager alluded to earlier motions, in an effort to create affordable housing for low-income households. More specifically, we have been working in concert with the city to develop Housing First models that will address the housing challenges for our homeless individuals. Currently, there are over 250 homeless individuals and over 200 homeless families within the city. This has not taken into account the hundreds of undocumented households and individuals that are living in overcrowded or unit-surfing spaces. The need to identify land, space, and/or unoccupied buildings that can be turned into low-income and supportive housing is immediate. Community Teamwork supports this motion and requests that the city continue to identify spaces, especially any municipal-owned sites that can be transitioned to nonprofit or developers to create new housing to mitigate the housing crisis we are all experiencing. In addition to that, I just want to kind of comment on the last motion, since Counsel Elliot asked me to come up and speak real quickly. But the data that was shared, a lot of that data for the 250 individuals that are housed, we only have like two, a delta of two, that is, a lot of that is temporary, meaning once the spring rolls around, there's going to be between 60 and 80 homeless individuals leaving those temporary shelters and coming back into the community, and really creating more challenges. If we do not kind of band together as a community to develop and create housing solutions that are permanent, you know, we're going to be having a lot more challenges than we're experiencing today. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel Newm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Carl indicated, and I spoke to this earlier, that we do have temporary solution. So, as Carl indicated, when spring come, there'll be more of people will be out on the street. So, there's urgency is there, that we do need to work, need to help. And this city, this administration have done that, and I'm looking, you know, I'm hopeful that we, you know, continue helping, giving hands to developer and/or nonprofit like CTI, so that we, you know, address this urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All those in favor, say aye. Back to the agenda, motion response B and C, Pataca Memorial Playground and Father McGuire Park. Any questions? Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I know all three of them. Thank you for the reports. The only request that we made is, if it's possible, to get the slide at the Pataca Playground done for the springtime. Instead, I wait until a new screw year, that would be great. With regards to Father McGuire Park, I know there was a grant, I believe, that was applied for, for the grass area to freshen that up. And then lastly, with the Vana Maev tree pruning. All the locations that were in the report were the exact ones that passed along. And just FYI, the remaining trees over at Campbell Field have been removed, and the residents were very happy with that. So, they passed along there. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Manager, a quick question. Something like the playground at Patacaville School, it's the park, but it's right really on the school playground. Would that make sense for us to take a look at that, like playgrounds in that situation that are right off of the driveway? Would that be better served if we had the school department maintain that area? Because it's, I mean, it's really school grounds, I would consider it. So, I didn't know if we should just take a look at those and turn a couple over to the schools for maintenance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Clancy is working to assess all of our playgrounds, ours as well as the schools', and is preparing a full report, not just as to conditions, but ownership. That's another issue that we want to look at, and then, and then what makes sense, as you're pointing out, whether it makes logic to, you know, transfer some of these in terms of control and exclusive use or what have you. So, she is in the process of trying to assess all of our playgrounds. The Parks Department is looking at it, and I believe she's in communication with the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Vana Maev tree pruning, was that yours too? Okay. So, okay. So, now information, 2021 year-end financial review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is our year-end financial review for FY 2021. I think, you know, the information is in the packet that Mr. Baldwin put together. It's obviously a very good report for 2021. If, with your permission, I'd ask Mr. Baldwin to highlight the aspects of the, of the report, but good news for, for the city.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Included in the report is a full package of financial reporting relative to FY 2021 for the council. As the City Manager mentioned, surprisingly enough, FY 2021 was an excellent year for the city. A couple of highlights from the report, the undesignated fund balance, which is a good financial indicator for the fiscal health of the city, ended FY 2021 at $18.9 million. To put that in perspective, over the last several years, the undesignated fund balance has hovered somewhere around $5 or $6 million. So, undesignated fund balance is the beginning point for the free cash calculation. It is, suffice it to say, that when the free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue, we will have a substantial number to work with. Why was that number so high last year? I think there's a couple of reasons that we can point to. The revenues exceeded the budget by $6.14 million. A large portion of that had to do with the American Rescue Plan revenue replacement. And on the other side of the ledger, there were $18.8 million in turnbacks. Those were unspent appropriations that are due in part to the fiscal controls that were in place, as well as some of the savings from refunding of outstanding debt, from hiring freeze, et cetera, et cetera. I think the council is also to be commended. We must remember that FY 2021, there were a series of 1/12 appropriations that were passed at the beginning of the fiscal year. We were in the middle of the pandemic, and I think that that played a pretty significant role in the type of year that we had. Also included in the report are a number of other statements that are reported to the Department of Re- Department of Revenue this time of year, one being the cash report. It's about $160 million in cash. The stabilization fund stands at $12.8 million, which is a high for the city. And on the other side, we do continue to need to address the outstanding liabilities in the city, pension and OPEB. Our OPEB trust is at 13.5. However, we are currently in the middle of updating actuarial, and our outstanding liability is over $800 million. So, it's a substantial amount. We also need to keep an eye on the enterprise fund balances, which are declining and will need to be examined in future years, but that is a report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have on any of the particulars. Thank you.
To Councilor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably the best news that we've seen fiscally in a long time, in the midst of, you know, this whole COVID pandemic crisis. And it's a testament to you and your administration, you know, the, we appreciate you meeting with the Finance Subcommittee monthly, providing updates, implementing measures, as you mentioned, you know, a lot of cost-saving measures, 18 million in turnbacks, that it's all positive news. And at the end of the fiscal year, this is where we stand. So, it didn't come easy. I know sacrifices had to be made. We'll continue to use a conservative approach to budgeting. The rescue money is clearly very helpful, and we're very judicious in spending that money where it was necessary. So, I appreciate the fiscal controls that have been put in place, and they continue to be in place, because we continue to stabilize ourselves during some times of continued uncertainty. So, Connor touched on all of, all the important aspects of why we're in good, sound fiscal condition, and, you know, moving forward, moving forward, we'll continue the same practice, and I just, you know, thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I second the comments that were just made by Councilor Elliott. Certainly good news, and I just had a quick question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager or Connor. The $5.8 million that was from the revenue replacement funds through the rescue plan, does that have to go through the free cash certification process as well, along with the other sort of unspent revenue, or is that sort of, does that money from the rescue plan essentially just become available right away?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to your question, Counselor, it's not available right away. It does flow through the free cash process at the end of the year. So, the money is transferred in from the American Rescue Pla, excuse me, American Rescue Plan Act Fund into the general fund, as well as in the enterprise funds, there was revenue loss transfers. At the close of the year, it will be certified through the free cash process like the other funds, and then will be made available to the city upon appropriation by the council.
Anything else on this?
Miss?
All right, so, yep, I just need to make a motion to accept everything, and then we'll go to that. So, motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Rock. Councilor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could suspend the rules and allow 7.1, the petition, to come in, there are three people involved with this petition, and...
Sure. Motion by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Noon. 7.1 miscellaneous. Joseph A. Marie Pereira requests to rescind three off-street parking spots located along 23 Dick Street, as well as 911 and 933 Gorm Street. Okay, so we have registered speakers?
The petitions.
Petitions, I mean, yep.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. I'm here tonight to ask that three parking spots, I'm here tonight to request three parking spots be rescinded in front of property that I purchased back on June 1st. I found the property in April. I called down to the city planning department and found out my rights. We're looking to put a prefab metal building on a light industrial part of my property. They told me about my frontage. I needed 25 feet of frontage. We have more than 25 feet of frontage. So, after I got my foundation permit, my plumbing permit, my foundation's in the process right now of, you know, I need backfilling before I can get the building permit. But anyways, right after we bought the property, we realized that there was a parking issue. The Century Pharmacy on the corner of Gorm and Dick Street. Back in 2012, there was an ordinance granted to Century Pharmacy to use off-street parking located in front of what is now my property. So, I went to the planning department. I have a surveyor who's working on a site plan and helped me get all the permits. But then I went to the building department, the planning department, the engineering department, met down there with the transportation department, because a few, on October 16th, I pulled up to meet my plumbers, and I seen this, which the surveyor has bigger copies. It's, the city went down and put painted spots in front of my property, right in front of my gates. I can't access my property if people are going to be parking there. So, I went and I spoke to Francesca, and I asked her, you know, what do I do? She sent me to the engineering department, who got the transportation department. Like I said, the transportation department told me I had to meet in front of the city council to have these spots rescinded. So, basically, after what I heard tonight, there's a lot of going on in the city. This is minor, but to me, it's not, because I need these parking spots removed so I can utilize the property for my needs. And it's pretty much it. I have my surveyor here to answer questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to refer. It's not a, should refer it to the transportation?
Yeah, we're going to refer it. Nobody has any questions, right? We'll refer it to the...
Yeah, I'll just to say, on page 51 of the...
You just need to speak on the microphone. Thank you.
Page 51 of the zoning bylaw that I referred to has the legal language, you know, saying that upon the sale, that it would lapse. You know, I couldn't ask for off-street parking for my, in front of my neighbors, you know, frontage, and that's all on page 51 of the zoning bylaw. So, it's pretty clear to me that my frontage is, can be utilized for how I see fit, not for my neighbor's pharmacy off-low parking.
Okay. Madam Manager?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that it be referred to my office. We can get the full report rather than the traffic engineer. I mean, they will be part of it, but let's get the whole story.
All right. So, a motion to refer to the manager's office for report recommendation by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, under petitions, 7-2, Norma Van Fricken requests permission to discuss grassroots effort for Better Lowell. Did you want to go? Yep, Norma. Just, you have five minutes, and just give us your name and address for the record.
My best.
Yep, thank you.
Hello, everyone, again. Thank you for having me. You might have guessed by now, I am a reformer, and here to assist, not condemn. In my pursuit to help build a healthier Lowell, I will continue where I left off. I live on Dover Street in the Highlands, and between my street and school streets is a dump. People spit, vomit, and there's garbage. Apples roll around in the street, and outside, two convenience stores, scratch tickets pepper the sidewalk. Soda bottles half-full, bags of french fries, plastic containers of applesauce, clam boxes filled with noodles and chicken wings, and these are some of our poor and disadvantaged. Thousands of nips, doggie doo and masks are a story unto themselves. Water bottles litter this city, especially on a lot of the sports and the athletic fields, piles of water bottles, some of them even full. Garbage overflows. In our throwaway society, nothing made to last, everything from furniture to appliances, even high-end clothing, is out on the sidewalk. Garbage overflows in the rubbish bins, and in the summer, it decomposes like the old dumps. Flies leaving their larva, and the stench spills into the environment.
Mr. Mayor?
Like depression days.
Is there a point to this? Could you ask the Speaker if there's a point to this?
Then the trash pickers, though resourceful, come and also spread disease. The street sweepers arrive next and blow everything to kingdom come with pollen, dust, and dead flies, and that's a fact. Mattresses are out sometimes weeks. In Couples Square, where the city-installed parking meters behind the grocery store has been a dump for years. A few weeks ago, the backloader came. Wait till you hear this. Suddenly, the once beautified area, spirea, use, some boxwood, milkweed, and beautiful rocks were gone. The backloader just pushed everything away. I don't know where they took everything. Now, the dirt is just flowing into the street every time it rains. Now, yeah, I read about turning that area, by the way, into a tourist community. Many tourist hotspots, by the way, are beginning to shy away from tourism due to tons of trash costing cities and residential, residents exponentially. And we should note, a few weeks ago, there was another shooting up there, with guns everywhere now, and an increase in deaths of young people. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, I really do. And all rich countries overproduce, called conspicuous consumption. We simply can't keep up with it all. It's the consummate price we pay. I should tell you some other things that I have seen in my treks across the city, like bodies.
You just have like a minute to wrap up about your grassroots?
This comes straight from my book.
Mr. Mayor, where's this going?
Out cold or dead, I'd be certain.
Where is this going?
But what numbed me most was the suitcase on a different trek, and the unmistakable odor of milk...
Hello, Ms. Fricken?
When I uncovered the residue of a shallow existence in the 21st century modern America. Behind a stone wall...
Can you just submit your writing, if you don't mind?
Syringes, empty pillboxes, prayer cards, and assorted women's clothing strewn about told a story not anyone would soon forget. Nobody can understand that sordid world, that dark, steamy side of life.
Can we just ask you to submit your writing, please?
Would haunt the most hardened individual, the worst scenarios, a teenager's suicide and delivery of goods to parents.
Ms. Fricken, can you just submit your writing?
I can't imagine going home after a day like that.
Shut the mic, please.
Most foreign other life.
Yeah. All right, you just submit that, and we'll take a look at it.
We're going to submit it to the record real quick.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your...
Okay. All right, back to the agenda for, I think, did we do 4.3, collective bargaining agreements, Madam Manager?
Sorry, I lost my place. We have on the agenda before you requesting votes on three separate collective bargaining agreements. One is FIRE, one is 1705, and one is 2532. There's summaries in your packet as to what each collective bargaining agreement provides. Essentially, it's similar to what other CBAs that you've already voted on. I don't know, Christine O'Connor, if there's anything you want to add specifically?
I think that covers it all. They, these mirror the previous bargaining CVA agreements that came before the council. And the next vote also for the ordinance grid mirrors the same salary COLA increase.
Well, so, do we have any, so this is just communication?
This is just to accept the communication, explaining the agreements on file.
Yeah, okay, so, the motion accepted and placed on file by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Mercier.
And to vote on the CBA, the collective bargaining... The MOUs, okay.
And the votes coming up. Okay. All right, votes by the city manager? Anybody want to make a motion to bundle?
Yes, bundle, thank you.
Motion by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Rock to bundle all the motions, 1, 5, 1 through 5...
Nine.
Nine. Votes to the city manager, vote to accept and expend $35,439 FY 21 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. 5-2, vote to accept and accept the 2020 pre-precincting plan for the city of Lowell. 5-3, vote to accept and expend $125,000 FY 21 Community Police and Development Micro Grants Program grant. Vote to, 5-4, vote to accept and expend $57,183 Mass Department of Mental Health grant. 5-5, vote to authorize manager execute First Amendment to the Verizon Wireless Lease. 5-6, vote to ratify and approve the execution by the city manager, MOU with the AFC, AFSCME Local 2532. 5-7, vote ratify and approve execution by manager of the MOU with Firefighters Local 853. 5-8, vote ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the MOU with AFSCME Local 1705. 5-9, vote to increase COLA for ordinance employees, and that's it. So, yeah, motion to adopt and approve by Councilor Rock, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Roll call, right? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I have a question on 5.2. This is the, accepting the 2020 re-precincting plan for the city of Lowell, so can we get an explanation? Because I think this, this is a big deal, in my opinion, because it's, it's changing the precinct. So, I just want an explanation before we go on a roll call vote.
You want, Madam Manager?
Yeah, this is, so, this is the re-precincting, which is done following the census, and in our case, also new districts. This is something that the city has worked on with the Secretary of State. This is essentially adopting the Secretary of State plan for these precincts in our eight districts. There will be four precincts in the eight districts. This is, has to be done, and it's required by law by the end of October. The legislature is also going through their plan. They actually went first this year versus municipalities going first. Normally, it's municipalities, but the legislature voted to do theirs first, and then it's now to municipalities to do. But in this case, we have worked with the secretary regarding, and they laid out the map. Christine O'Connor can, can explain in further detail, but this is essentially, right now, because, this does not apply in this election, let me be clear. This is for next election in 2022. But right now, because we have new precincts, but we didn't have this information, that's why we have been trying to deal with, how do we have the election with just eight districts without these approved precincts? So, Christine, if you want to discuss.
Sure. The, the only thing that I would add in is that this also, once we received the plan from the Secretary of State's office, this was forwarded to our own expert that we've been working with, and, and he also approved of the, of the plan as drawn by the Secretary of State's office. office. The parties have been going back, parties being both the city as well as the state, have been going back to refine it, and, but the plan before you is one that meets all the requirements of the agreement that was entered into by the council and the litigants, and is satisfactory to the state, and is before you tonight to be accepted by the city.
So it does alter existing boundaries that we're using for this election, correct?
Not for the districts.
I mean, not for this election, just for the precincts. So the ward, the wards will, the wards will stay, or the districts, sorry, will stay in place, but the precincts that are, precincts are used to tabulate vote counts, but will, are going to be modified.
Well, we essentially don't have official precincts right now.
Correct. That was the, that was the problem.
Right.
And that's what had, had led to an initial proposal that had been approved by the Secretary of State's office, as having the centralized, single centralized polling location in each of these districts that were created. What this new plan will establish, reestablish for the city, following this litigation, is to have wards and precincts back within these newly-formed districts.
Which essentially would allow for additional polling places based upon these precincts, so.
Correct. It'll, right, it'll give us the freedom that we previously had before this, before this change took place.
Okay, well, I think that's significant, now that there will be, now that we do have final 2020 census data from the federal government, we're creating this precinct, so moving forward, we'll be able to have the opportunity to have additional polling locations for people to go and vote, because that's how it's tabulated, by precinct.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another question. So, obviously, we were in the unique position this year with the House and the Senate going first and drawing their boundaries for the legislative districts, and the city having to draw precinct lines with respect to the city council district boundaries. Are there places on this map where, given the newly-drawn Lowell House districts, where some of these precincts will essentially cut between those lines? So, for example, and again, for the residents watching, we're talking about, not this election, a future state election, will there be, say, representative districts where, or precincts where there'll be two different, two different House representative districts? Is that clear? Typically, the precincts will.
There'll be 32 precincts. And so this is specifically, all this, this isn't dealing with those, that, the Election Commission will have to determine the precincts for the representative elections, as well as the Senate, Senate, not so complicated, but, and so whether, whether there would be two separate ones, I mean, that all has to be worked out on a local level, once those, once their district boundaries are, you know, their districts are finalized and ours are. Does that make sense?
So, let me just ask a question to make sure I understand it. So these precinct lines that we're about to approve are, relate specifically to city council districts?
City, well, city precincts, there will be city precincts, regardless of whether it's a state, federal, or city election. But they're, they're designed around the eight districts. They will then have to decide, once the districts are finalized, I guess the House is going to finalize theirs pretty quickly, in the future, how to, how to apportion the House one. But that's something that the Election Commission, is my understanding, will deal with.
Correct. And so this is, this is strictly just, just creating these precincts, and as the council is aware, you have the whole balance in terms of the composition of precincts and wards, and the percentage that we have to meet with all of them. So, there are many things that go into, that go into play, but this is, that, that's just going to be doing it within these existing districts.
Okay.
I just, I think it bears repeating for people at home, how people will be voting next week, a week from tonight, this is the only time we will have these polling locations because we didn't have districts, and that's, and we couldn't make them up. The secretary said, you can't just draw your own lines, you have to wait for the process. So, the polling locations that will be used, they may be different, and probably some will be different next election, which will be, you know, the state election and federal election. The, but the system that we had, the 11 wards, 33 precincts, that is gone. So, it is district and precincts, and approval tonight would be eight districts, 32 precincts.
Okay, great. I don't, I don't want to belabor this, I just want to make sure I understand it. So this map was drawn, really, without any respect at all to the, the state legislative process for?
Well, they do their process, we do our process. Usually, the municipal process comes first, then they do theirs. It was reversed this year, but we do our process, they do theirs. But that doesn't mean the election doesn't happen in the city. It does. And then they, the Election Commission will determine where the polling locations will be for the representative districts. Because those are changing, some of those are changing too.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Because the process was sort of reversed this year, I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, could you tell me the process here? If the council were to approve tonight, what is the process? Say, Secretary of State, and then our expert looking at it and working on the precinct, and how much involvement, if any, the public would have on this?
Sure. Whoever.
This is, so as far as the, this is not part of a so-called public process, but again, the, in this particular case, we do have the, the expert who, sort of unofficially, has been balancing the interests of all of the public, of the council, of the parties in the, in the litigation, who had also reviewed this, this map. But it's not, it's not part of that sort of public process. It was drawn up by the Secretary of State's office, and, and then was reviewed by the, by the expert. It's before the council tonight for action that we would, that we would need to take. And then, after that, it would be sent back to the state, and there is a group, it's referred to as the Local Elections District Review Commission, and it's an independent commission that would then have the final say on that. So in terms of the process that's followed, it's, it's a process that does not necessarily hold public hearings or things that we traditionally do. So we followed that process, and the process was, the state ended up, Secretary of State's office put together these precincts, it was reviewed by our expert, it was reviewed by city officials, with a lot of input going back and forth, and, and comes before the council this evening. And then it will be reviewed again by this independent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Ruck?
Yes.
Nine years in our votes.
All right. Are there any reports? All right. So we just have the Wyman Specter, Sello Partnership, DBA, Verizon Wireless, small cell facility on existing college at 7 Whitman Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order. Motion by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Chow. That's it, right? All right. City council motions. 8-1, Councilor Samaras requests city manager work with the superintendent of schools to accelerate the removal and replacement of the trailers at Colley Stadium, seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, based on information I have, the coaches were told that those trailers would be removed prior to the opening of the school year, and it would be replaced with new trailers that I believe the school department has purchased. But there seems to be some issue about taking down the trailers that already exist there. They have no power, they're a mess, and, you know, the thing is, you literally have our coaches now training out of the backseat of their car. And if, if you could help expedite this, this would be great. Thank you. Madam Manager?
Sure. Madam Manager?
Thank you. We'll get your report. I did have a conversation with the superintendent about this. They have ordered the trailers, they have gotten quotes on the removal. It is in process. I don't know, in terms of the delay, you know, that's being referred to, whether it was a supply chain issue, I don't know, but they are working on that, and it is underway.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a little information, too. They are working on the quotes to remove it. That's not the issue. The discussion now is whether it's, we should be purchasing trailers, renting trailers, or building our own temporary trailer, or whatever we want to call it, for the time being. So that's the new discussion now. It's been quite expensive to rent trailers for a five-to-10-year plan, and it's just not acceptable right now. So that's where the delay is.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Councilor Noon, request city manager have proper department work with National Grid and others who need to close parts of the streets for maintenance, schedule such work outside of high-traffic times, and to consider advance warning signage that gives motorists a chance to find an alternate route, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you've seen a lot of work done in term of, by National Grid and/or other contractor. The common sense, you know, when you have those kind of work, you know, do it not during the rush hours, because we have a lot of constructions going on, we have the lot over path, and so many others, so, you know, and if we were to, we have, if we really have to do it during the rush hour, send out a note, and, I mean, have them, when they apply with the city inspection of building or any other, because at some point, I know they have some communication with the city, we need to communicate better to our resident. Send out notice, send out, you know, a head time and say, hey, look, next week we're going to do this, that, you know? But impossible, not doing during the rush hours. It's common sense, and those work too, when it's get done. I know that this National Grid and/or contractor pull out barn. If they don't clean up after themselves, go after them. It's, enough's enough. Thank you.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on that motion? Makes a lot of sense. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Next motion tonight by Councilor Elliott, request city council discuss the recent release of the state's 2030 master plan on solid waste, and consider creating a subcommittee on solid waste to address costs of illegal dumping, increased recycling, enforcement of illegal dumping, and approve yard waste trash pickup, seconded by Councilor Chow. Councilor Elliott?
Well, discussing the master plan is going to take quite some time, but the state did release it just last, last week, and there's lots of incentives, there's a lot of direction, there's a lot of plans included in that. And I know we don't want to set up another subcommittee, but I do think it may, we may want to consider setting one up just for solid waste. Number one, to digest and see how, you know, the, how we can benefit, what the state is doing, how we can partner, how we can evaluate, and take advantage, quite frankly, of the incentives that are in here, whether it's grant, grants are being given to communities as outreach, as education, and given the magnitude of the problem and challenges that we faced this past year, how can we work with the state and implement a number of initiatives to work with environmental justice initiatives, as well as reduction incentives and goals? So, I do think it makes some sense, rather than having this long discussion, certainly not this evening, but in the future, evaluating the master plan, what are the goals set by the state, and hence working in conjunction and cooperation with the municipalities and the City of Lowell. So I, I know it's a, it's a monumental problem. There's also recycling incentives, and some ideas on how to increase, so there's a lot of stuff in there, and I don't think we, we don't have the time tonight, but I, so that's, that's just a motion out there for consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All right. Next two motions tonight, from Councilor Chow, request city manager investigate installing a crosswalk on Stevens Street at the intersection of Fairfax in front of Lowell Catholic, seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If Fairfax is at intersection of Stevens Street, and if you cross Stevens Street from Fairfax, it leads to the front door of Lowell Catholic, and Stevens Street is Main Street, it's very busy during the rush hour in the morning, and also in the afternoon, because Fairfax is the area where you cross Stevens Street to the front door of Lowell Catholic, a lot of parents drop off their kids there in the morning and in the afternoon. So, there's a crosswalk on Fairfax from side to side, from Fairfax on one side to Fairfax on the other side, but there's none from Fairfax crossing to Lowell Catholic crossing Stevens Street. And many kids and parents, they use Fairfax again for drop-off and pickup. It's dangerous if we can have crosswalk from Fairfax crossing Stevens Street to Lowell Catholic. That would be a lot of safety for children and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion tonight by Councilor Chow, request city manager take action to replace the missing street light on the telephone pole at the intersection of Pine and Wilder Streets, seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Chow. Did you want her to replace it, or herself?
I'm sorry.
Or, did you want her, herself to replace it? pine up there. Councilor Chow?
This is a very busy intersection again, Pine and Wilder, because there's a Moore School there. And this light post, I would get the photo to you, Madam Manager, the exact light post. There was, there was a light in that post before, but I think they replaced the post a few years ago, and there's no light bulb there, so I just need a light bulb there. It's dark at night, it gets dark earlier now, and there's a house across the street from the light pole, but because it's dark, the fence around it got hit by vehicles a couple of times already. So if you could look into that light post to install the light bulb, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, we will report, but the commissioner tells us it's going to be installed this week, so.
That's great news. The fastest solution ever heard. Thank you.
I didn't even have to do it, so.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion response, Madam Manager. Thank you so much.
There you go. All right. Next, we have announcements, but I did want to ask what the committee might want to do. Next week is going to be a very light meeting schedule, so would, do we want to entertain a canceling next week's bonus meeting, or do we just want to have a very light meeting? So, any suggestions on next week? Anybody?
I would ask the manager if he needs anything done next week.
Not, not anything that I'm aware of, that has, that's going to be time-sensitive for next week. You don't know? No, nothing that we're aware of that needs to be acted on.
Yeah, so, really, should we just, do you want to just?
I've kept, there's no public hearings, I've kept the public hearings off for next week.
Okay. What's the wish of the body? Anybody want to make a motion? You want to have the meeting?
Motion to cancel next week's meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Mercia, seconded by Councilor Noon to cancel. All right. Any announcements, Madam Manager?
Just quickly, the city.
Madam Manager, roll call. Sorry, Madam Manager, roll call, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, roll call, my mistake.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Ruck?
Yes.
Nine years.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Just quickly, the city will be having Monster Bash this Saturday in downtown. You can, we've circulated all the information among the schools, it's on our website, it's on social media, it's on our Facebook page, but there are about 25 participating merchants downtown who will have trick-or-treat. Children and their families can go to the stores trick-or-treating. We will also have a, again, the weather doesn't look great, but knock on wood, maybe it won't rain, but it will happen, rain or shine, because we will also have a tent in Lucy Larkham, and the haunted house hosted by the Kiwanis Club will be taking place inside at Lowell High School. So for, for anybody who's looking to enjoy, please come down with your families and kids, 12 to 4 this Saturday in downtown Lowell. Mill Number Five is also participating, so there's going to be a lot of merchants who are participating in this. And then Trick or Treat will take place in the City of Lowell Sunday, 6:00, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in, in Lowell, so that's it.
Thank you. And then there's a Saturday, October 30th, at 10:00 AM, there's a square dedication for Gene Musgrave at the corner of Old Ferry Road and Pataca Boulevard. Anything else? Motion adjourned by Councilor Ruck, seconded by Councilor Chow. Thank you.